All right, Commissioners.
Hold the Franklin County. Franklin County Board of the Commission is back in session.
Commissioners, as you announced for Ms. Nicole Sheppi to come forward, a few notes. As you see the agenda, Keith Bassett is here. He's going to talk about the new roof update. Richard Lewis is going to talk about your ambulance fleet. That's what you asked for. And then I just want you to know before we move on, I have a few items on my report that applies to Weems that I think I need to have Ms. Sheppi here to interact with me, okay?
Okay.
So it's gonna be a multi-person show here.
All right.
Ms. Sheppi?
Good morning, Nicole Sheppi, Weems Facilities. I just wanted to bring you guys up to date. Yesterday, we did have a life safety inspection from ACHA, revisit inspection, and it went well. We have a few paperwork ends to tidy up, and we'll be working on those in the coming weeks. So first of all, new construction. We had a planning meeting on August 7th with architects, clinical staff, and administration. A consultant for the acoustical analysis of the new construction has been retained, and we anticipate receiving the acoustical report by the end of September. We have a target of completing the Stage Two ACHA stand-up review in November, and we expect to receive the guaranteed maximum price from Culpeper by December.
By December?
December, yes, sir. Regarding Synergy, the re-roofing project, we have ongoing collaboration with Gary Gargis, the architect retained by Synergy, and Synergy Management and subcontractors. Kate's Electric was out on site preparing work on the 16th, and we have Mr. Bassett here to supplement my comments.
Good morning, Keith Bassett, FMIT Synergy. As Nicole said, we got GWG Architect engaged to get us through the ACHA process. We are working to put together the book that ACHA requires and waiting on a couple of documents from the hospital regarding some testing that's required for that book. Once we get that documents in place, then we'll be submitting everything to ACHA. We have asked for expedited approval, and Gary seems to think that ACHA is going to assist us with that expedited approval. We are starting to get all the temporary stuff brought in. Trailers should be starting to roll in next week. I'm waiting on 100% confirmation date. We've got to have a setup crew that the company uses in order to get those trailers tied down and secured, and then we'll get everything else hooked up to those trailers once they're here on site. The roofing contractor has been told to go ahead and get his material ordered with the hope of starting the 1st of September. If you've got any questions for me?
We're getting a lot of rain. Is that affecting you much?
That will affect it when we start with the actual roof process. Getting the temporary stuff signed up, that's our setup, that's not going to affect us there. We will have to pay attention to the weather. I've already been talking with the roofing contractor on this, going, look, you know, you can't just go by the forecast. This is South Florida and the end of summer. You're going to have pop-up rain showers every afternoon. You're going to have to have provisions to work through the morning up to, you know, late or early afternoon, and then have tarps ready to stand by to cover up if we start seeing we're going to get rain. But we can't just not work a day because the weatherman says there's a 20% chance of rain.
Okay. We in nowhere, Florida.
What did I say? I said South Florida.
I've got a question for him, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
When you're referring to the trailers, what trailers are you... Are we still looking at moving the hospital out into a temporary building? What are the trailers for?
The trailers will be for the administrative functions of the hospital and then sleep rooms for the people that are there overnight.
Okay.
Keep up the good work. Keep us informed.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, just to update on Weems Medical Center West, on August 5th, there was a ceiling board collapse, and it was due to the condensation of the HVAC ductwork. Upon further discovery, the insulation of the ductwork is no longer intact, and with the extreme heat conditions we've been experiencing, condensation has left the attic extremely wet. We also discovered that there's not adequate ventilation in the attic. Therefore, we are seeking approval to spend up to $14,000 to reseal, re-insulate the four ductwork systems and install attic fans to help with the exhaust.
Raise the vote.
So moved.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Burke. Any more discussion?
Chairman, do you remember when I first told you about that situation? You told me exactly what basically Nicole just repeated. That was the problem, and you're right. That's exactly what it was.
Yeah. Y'all read the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All in poll? I pass you now.
The Emergency Medical Services EMS in Apalachic, we've been working with the County Roads Department to prepare the hospital site for the trailer. Because of the rain, the site is not 100% ready. We're going to ask for a delay in the delivery of the trailer one week so Howard and I can have the site with the lime rock and ready for the delivery. We're anticipating everything else to go smoothly.
Might be longer than that, all this rain.
I hope not. Regarding Carabelle and Lanark, the EMS Director and I have identified a possible location for a short-term location for an EMS station on the east side of Franklin County. The location will need some renovation work, and we are currently seeking quotations regarding the renovation cost. We do anticipate part of that, the furniture and equipment that would need to go into the new EMS station could be transferred to a more permanent location. We've also identified a piece of Franklin County property, and we're seeking approval to utilize the architect to adapt the earlier concept for construction on the Franklin County property.
So, Commissioners, if you remember, you know, we all know about the issue with EMS at the Lanark Fire Station. And so, the relocation of where we were, we found out that the building did not belong to the county, so we didn't want to invest that type of money in rehabbing that building over there around the curve before it was caught. So, the mission was for Nicole and Louis to find a short-term temporary location that we could move to while we look for a permanent location. Well, Mr. Kirigant reminded Nicole, myself, that we own a lot right there in Carabelle, right behind the, our annex building over there in Carabelle. If you guys remember, a couple of years ago, could have been shorter than that, PIGET Construction, when they were doing their project, came to you and asked you to store, if you guys gave them permission to store some of their construction, basically to stage their project on that same lot. So that's a lot that we can probably rebuild, a permanent home for EMS over on the east side of the county. It's not even a block off of 98. They won't have to go through residential streets to get to 98, and I think it's an excellent location. So I've talked to, and so has Nicole, talked to the architect, and he said it, for a few more dollars, yeah, he can actually build a small EMS station, permanent station, right there in Carabelle, on the county's property. And parking will not be an issue because we have the entire parking lot of the annex of the Carabelle Annex.
I think that'll be better. It'd be, in the future, you want to move, I mean, it's land that the county owns, and it'll take care of the situation, permanent.
So I guess my question is to this board, do you want us to start, will you give us authority to have the architect, Mr. Schuler, start the plan to design this, this permanent building there, that location?
Is, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Is this annex you're talking about, it's in the middle of Carabelle? Or is it out there to the east of it, behind the building y'all were talking about rehabbing last meeting?
No, no, no. This is the one right there in Carabelle, right downtown in Carabelle. Yeah. We own the lot right behind it.
Mr. Chairman, I want to ask you a question. When you say behind, are you saying north of it?
You see?
North of it.
That's right.
Yes.
You're saying behind, it's actually to the side.
Side, yes. I'm just making sure what we're talking about.
Behind the building.
Close to the IGA. That's, I'm just...
Do you have any idea what the, Mr. Chairman, what the construction cost is going to be? Is it going to be two or $300,000?
No. Well, what did Doug say? Doug, he said it wouldn't be...
$175 a square foot?
Yeah.
How much?
$175.
A square foot?
Square foot.
How big is the building?
We haven't decided yet. I know what Nicole would like, but we haven't decided yet.
That's right.
Based on that, we're going to sit down with Doug. I just didn't want to have a formal conversation with Doug until you guys were aware of it, and you gave us a nod to start looking that way. I mean, we can bring you an estimate before you make a final decision, if that's the way you want to go. I'm very good with that.
Raise the vote on this.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Excuse me. Thank you. Before we get into all these new construction ideas, I'd like to really, really analyze, excuse me, the issue of EMS service there in Lanark. I've had an opportunity to visit and talk and received many emails and phone calls from the folks who live there in Lanark Village. The amazing co-dependence that there is there on an EMS service is very significant. Folks are very concerned about the relocation of that EMS service. Before we start thinking about all this new construction potential and new location, I really would like to look at the facts-based reasons why and why we should, why we should and why maybe we should not have EMS services there at Lanark. I think we need to just know what our physical plant is, what potential we can do to rehabilitate that physical plant there at the fire station. And I also think that the negotiation of travel out of that fire station and down some of those roads like Parker and Hefford and so on do present a safety issue that we need to look at to see what are the facts there. Let's also remember that that hillipad that is so important to our county happens to be relocated very contiguously to the EMS station there in Lanark. So, I'd like to propose some more facts-based on, can we rehab what we already have and make it more functional and more suitable? And if not, what are the facts why we cannot? And then move into a potential new location.
Do it belong to us?
Say again.
Do that building belong to us?
Does that building belong to us there at the...
In Lanark? No, so that belongs to the Lanark Village Fire Department?
Yeah, that was my main reason, Commissioners, looking for a permanent home that we own in Carabelle. And I would tell you, for me, one of my first things I was going to say, we're a few feet away from 98 versus how far we are being in Lanark. I understand what Lanark is saying, but I understand the EMS is not just for Lanark.
Yes, I understand.
It's for the entire eastern end of the county, so I would want to do something that works for, helps everybody in the eastern end of the county.
Understand, okay.
But if...
It is for the public good as we think this through. And I didn't realize we did not own that building at Lanark.
No, we don't. That's the fire station's.
I see where that is, okay.
Fire Department's building, I'm sorry.
I just, I think Lanark need to be comforted that we are really thinking about this to make sure that we are truly accessible to their needs wherever we go.
We really weren't trying to look over Lanark Village, but we was having a conflict, it was a conflict out there with the, with the Fire Department in Amalane. And we were trying to get a, just get away and get on, get our own.
Yeah.
I mean, it wasn't nothing to do with...
Not at all.
It wasn't nothing to do that we didn't want to be in Lanark, we trying to move away from Lanark, but we trying to separate. I guess that'll be the best thing to say.
They sent us a $19,000 water bill.
Understood.
We corrected that water problem, I believe, too, by the way.
Where are we presently staging on that end of the county? What are we doing presently? Where are we staging on that end of the county for the EMS?
We're still at...
Still at Lanark.
The Fire Department building, yes, sir.
I just thought of that.
I'd also like to recommend that you bring your proposal and y'all get this design and all done back to this board for approval.
Most definitely.
I know you mentioned that.
Yes.
I would definitely want it brought back to the board so we know what we're doing and how much money we're spending.
Before we say this.
Before we spend it.
Yeah.
And, you know, when you look at it, the state of Florida tell you quick, you don't have to have a hospital, but you've got to have that Amalane service.
Yeah.
That's the, you know, that's what they, that's what we got to have that. That's what the state says. I mean, we can't, they tell you quick. So, I think the best thing, we'll pledge to the vote on it, no matter what I think. Pledge of the vote.
Are you asking for a motion? Michael directing what I just, comments I just made?
Yeah, I was asking a motion for us to engage Mr. The Architect to do that, and then bring back whatever plans he comes up with, in case you all want to change the plans with someone.
So moved. I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Jones. Any more discussion?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in poll? I pass you now.
Thank you, sir. Now, Richard Lewis will come up and give you a status on the ambulance fleet.
Okay. Hey. Good morning. My name's Richard Lewis, Weems EMS Director. And I appreciate you guys letting me speak today. Our current ambulance fleet, we have four vehicles. We had, did have a vehicle accident about a month or two ago, so that does kind of put us in a little bind with our vehicles. But currently, we have a 2016 Chevy that's stationed in East Point, and the current mileage is 127,000 miles. Our second truck's a 2015 that's stationed at Lanark, it's had 140,000 miles. Our third truck was a backup, but it's now a primary truck. It's a 2008 that's in East Point. It'll be moved to Apalachic whenever we get the station over here. It currently has 150,000 miles. Our backup truck's a 2000 model Ford. It has 160,000 miles. We are expecting the new truck that was approved and we ordered, we're expecting it the first week in November. When it gets here, the 2008 model will be a backup. At that point, we'll have two backups. Currently, over the last six months, every one of these trucks has been in the shop at least once a month for multiple issues and servicing. We're currently putting about 5,500 miles a month on each truck, and the trucks are on the road roughly 12 hours a day on average. And that's going out of county for TMH and Panama City as well. That's our current update.
Okay.
Well, let me, it take Amalane about a year to get in?
Currently, nine months a year. Right now, they are all the, they're all in back order. For the Chevy, it was going to be two years, for the Dodge, a year and a half, and we're ordering Ford right now because we can get them in about nine months. So whenever we order another vehicle, it'd be nine months for the day of the order.
Okay. What do you think the average of mileage should be on an ambulance before we start to consider turning it in?
It really depends on the truck. Usually, we're looking at 250 to 300,000.
Okay.
And it also depends on, you know, with the rough roads we've had due to Hurricane Michael, we've had a lot of suspension issues, so, but we look at roughly 250 to 300,000.
Another thought is, you know, that wrecked ambulance that's out behind the EMS building at Lanark, is it appropriate now to have it removed and taken elsewhere so it's not publicly visible?
Yes, sir. We are looking into that right now. We had just got the insurance information back, and that's what we was waiting on.
Okay.
So...
Now, as you get them new ones, you going to sell them old ones or get rid of them some kind of way?
Yes, sir. Once we get the new one, we need, we really need two backups for, you know, safety in case something happens to one of our primary trucks. So when we get this newest one, we'll have the two backups, the 2000 model and the 2008 model. And any additional trucks after that, we'll start selling the old ones to put back towards the funds for the newer ones or equipment.
And, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
One more thought. You know, as we consider, we're only considering the relocation of our EMS service, you know, footholds, et cetera. Access to healthcare, I think, is critical, and you guys with your ambulance services are first-line entry into healthcare and critical need. Should we be considering, and should you be planning, that we consider maybe buying another ambulance unit and help us think about staffing that system? Just because we're just shifting so many different sites of locations of our EMS services? And we've had a conversation about the desert of care that's out there in Alligator Point and that area down there, to have more access of ambulance services. So I'm asking, should you be planning on another ambulance unit and staffing?
Are you talking about a additional fourth full-time unit?
An additional unit entirely, yes.
That's something we can look into.
You know, we're making so many shifts in where our services are located and property and that type of thing. Okay.
Well, last meeting, I asked them to look and see, that's what I was talking about, to check the land, to see we had any land in Lanark, Carabelle. I just tell them the whole east end, where you check your land.
So, I want to understand, Commissioner, so you're asking that we have a fourth ALS on?
I'm wondering if we need an entirely, another additional ambulance unit added to our fleet.
And it would be stationed, like, in a particular area? It would be a floor... I'm just trying to figure out so I can kind of, because I want you guys to know that, don't forget, he's talking about the one we're getting in November, which we already ordered. And then now, currently working, Aaron and I are currently working with USDA for that grant to get two more.
Oh, you are? I didn't know that.
Yeah, because, I'm sorry, I thought we discussed that at the last meeting.
I didn't realize that, okay.
We voted on last meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. So, basically, we have...
What will be our net result then?
Let's say what, by next summer, we'll have three brand-new amb... Well, not brand-new, but you know, we have three ambulances. I guess I'm trying to clarify whether you want a new unit or you want a new, an additional staffed unit, because right now, we have three ALS 24/7.
Yes, sir.
Yes. So, I'm just trying to...
I just basically wanted the comfort level that we really do have good, solid coverage in the entire length of our peninsula with ambulance services.
Okay.
Okay.
I just want to clarify that, Commissioner, that's all.
Anything else? Anybody else got anything for the Amalane? Mr. Lewis?
Well, I appreciate you guys hearing me out, and I want to thank you guys in the county for letting me use a projector for the community education I've been doing. We've been outreach, and we're about to start our EMR class, Emergency Medical Responder, at Alligator Point that the Lanark Fire Department will also be attending. And it's thanks to you guys letting me use the equipment, so...
They didn't even know I borrowed it, too, but that's okay. We're good. All right, Commissioners, if you all... I'm sorry, Nicole, you have anything else? That's it? Okay. Don't go too far. So, three items on my report. Let's start with number four. That's an easy one. Carwigs and Ingram, the auditing firm for Weems Memorial, has submitted engagement letters for the 2019 audit and cost report. They need a signature. With the recent changes in CEOs, I recommend the board action, I recommend board action to authorize the chairman's signature on these documents. Usually, the CEO would sign them. I send the documents to Ms. Erin Griffith for her review, and she agrees with having the chairman sign these documents. Board action to authorize the chairman to sign engagement letters for the hospital 29 audit and cost report.
Raise the vote. Second. Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Jones. Any more discussion on that? They don't need to sign them?
Yes, sir.
All right, now, okay.
Don't worry, you won't go to jail. Everything is okay. I promise.
No, that's not... All in favor?
Aye.
All in poll? I pass you now.
Now, before I move on to my next Weems item, Chairman, you had asked about when we first switched CEOs here recently, about an operational audit. Do you want me, sir, would you ask the board to have a separate motion to ask Carwigs and Ingram what that would cost? Basically, what the chairman was asking for, he wanted to know, he wanted some kind of audit done to show, and it would help the new CEO to show where the, I guess, just operationally, where we're making, where our weaknesses are, basically, you know? Is it collections are bad, you know? How long are we taking to pay our vendors, you know? Why is the cash flow, why did they have to use that savings account in a manner with the cash flow and to address those type of items? I don't know how much it would cost. I didn't talk to Carwigs and Ingram yet. I just wanted to know how the board feels about that. That would be separate from the audit and for the cost report. That's a, be a separate project for them.
Yeah, what I, I went to Mike and, you know, the previous CEO, he told us, say, before the storm, I mean, after the storm, he said, well, he didn't, he was doing good, didn't need, and then it came up different, that he did need it. I'm not accusing nobody of nothing, but what I wanted to see was where was our weakness, like, collections or, you know, it might need some helping getting them numbers or whatever they call them thing when they, they send off the bills, you got to, we'll know that we got to send our people to schools and different thing because every year, you got the different codes come up. And then I was told by administrator one time, say, every time you sent off the wrong code, it'll come back, they reject it and stuff like that. So, I'm just trying to find out where we show that, or where we do it. And it'll help everybody. It'll help. I'm not a hospital administrator, don't try to be. If we can get, if we can do things to help, I think it'll be good. And, you know, look, that's just my opinion, that's one man opinion. What about y'all?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, Michael, that you go out to Carwigs and then come back to us with a number of what it would cost to do the...
Operational audit?
As the chairman's suggestion.
Okay.
And then we can make a decision from, based on what it's going to cost, the benefits of that.
I second that.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Burke. Any more discussion on that?
I've got a question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Michael, I'm assuming we know that they are able to do this kind of audit, operational audit?
I think so. I think I mentioned that a long time ago at first, but I'll verify, because, you know, at some point, a few years ago, CHC did an operational assessment of their own. Is there a difference to what they did versus to what an auditor would do? I'll find out, and I'll let the board know.
Bring back the information.
I sure will.
Yeah, I mean, we got some strong points and some weak points. Once you get your weak points, you find out what they is and work on them, it should be helpful.
Mr. Chairman, just as you said, we're considering this operational auditor, are we, are we going to offer certain thresholds that the hospital administrator works within? And when certain, when those thresholds are exceeded, he comes to the board for advisor permission. For instance, when he's exceeded his budget in some level, like by 15, 20, $30,000, shouldn't we be hearing about what that critical area is in that threshold and where we need to give him advisor direction?
Yes, sir, but I'll be honest with you, that's not what I was expecting from this particular audit. I just wanted somebody to tell us, like the chairman said, where our weakness is.
All right.
You know, and then we have to make a decision, how do we go about trying to fix those issues? But I understand what you're saying, but yes, I think that that requires additional meetings with your Weems Board of Directors and the CEO. So we all are in agreement on the same page as to who's responsible for what, and when does this board want to know something?
Yes.
So, yes, that would be separate. And that could be after this, we have this audit done, we could, you can make your decisions based on the results of this audit if we can get it done.
Okay.
All in favor? All along, trying to do it, help get the money in. I meant, you know, if we got a weak spot, let's fix it. If we okay. If, we got to be collecting some. And it's a lot of old folks in, a lot of retired people in the county, a lot of old people. A lot of retired people. And they, they got insurances and and they collecting some, some money, it's got to be collected. You just got to be Johnny on the spot, I mean, I don't know. But I do know we got a certain number that have them benefits. And we ought to be, make sure we pulling in all our resources. Y'all ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously.
Number five, at your July 26 special meeting, there was a motion to authorize a purchase of a manufactured building for an EMS station at Weems. Nicole just discussed this. The board requested the removal of any trees that might damage the new building during the storm as part of the site clearing that the county's road department was or is assisting with. What was not anticipated is the need to hire contractors to remove some of the large trees that were knocked down from the property. Board action to authorize a payment of five thousand dollar invoice for the removal of the large trees from the Weems site for the new EMS station. Your county road department, Nicole's jumping when you're ready, could not remove some of the larger trees that, that they knocked down to help with site clearing, correct?
Correct.
And so we had to hire contractors to do that. So that was not approved previously, so I just need someone, someone, I need the board to approve this for me.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Burt. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Uh, Michael, as a state's on number five, you're purchasing a manufactured building, is that something that's not possible in the city of Caribou when you're talking about building a building? I mean, i- is that not possible? That could potentially save us money from two hundred thousand dollars down to the price of a manufactured building?
We could, and I thought about that, but once we heard about the lot, and I, I'm sorry, my memory fails, what Amy told me, what flood plain the actual, that lot right behind the, um, NX building was? I think we, we talked about that.
We had the evacuation, so in a permanent building, they can stay to.
A little bit longer.
Longer.
But, um.
So they're not going to stay longer in Appalachia, they're not going to stay longer in Caribou, is that what you're telling me?
If it's a permanent building versus a trailer.
Yeah, but they got.
Well, why aren't we treating both sides the same? You're going to build a permanent building in one location, you're going to put a manufactured home in the other side, I mean.
Yeah, and.
I'm just bringing that up for you to think about when you're, you're looking at all this, Mike.
It is. The, the Appalachia thing, the problem, I, I'll be honest with you, it's because it was easier fix and because I basically, I'll be honest with you, I was replacing what was there before.
Okay.
This is why I thought that way in Appalachia.
I'm, I'm looking at it from a financial standpoint.
Yes, sir. And at the time, the prob, I was not aware, I'm not, I hadn't knew anything about the problems we were having in Lenox Village, I didn't even think that far and that, think that we ever need to move them from where they were, but it happened, so. For me, it is Monday morning quarterbacking, Commissioner, you're right, but, you know, um, we, we'll rethink it and see, you know.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, think about it when you.
Yeah, as we consider that lot.
Looking at all this, because you, you know, if we're going to spend a ton of money as opposed to what we're doing with the rest of the ancients, I mean, something to be looked at.
I will, when Amy gets back, um, I will sit with her again and.
I mean, the river in Caribou is way down there.
Yeah.
It's a long way to get flooding in, in the middle of.
Oh, I.
Caribou, you're going to have a major impact from a major storm. For that to come from down at the river's edge all the way up into the middle of town is a long.
Yeah.
It's, it's a huge elevation, I can't imagine that you're probably in the flood zone right there.
We'll see, I'll ask.
It's just something to be looked at.
Yes, I will.
I tell you another thing you can think about. The manufactured building, the steel building, they cheap. And they make them out of houses. They, they, you know, they convert them into houses and everything now, so. And they way cheap, cheaper than the trailer and a stick built, so.
Okay, I'll look at many options as possible for Caribou.
Half the price.
Yeah. Yeah, they way, price will be very, very low.
Okay, and I, I will, I'll look at all options, commissioners, and bring everything back and let you all make a decision.
I got a question, where's all this money coming from? Trust fund?
Yes, sir.
Oh, my God.
I, I really thought you weren't going to ask me that, but you did, so.
Mr. Chairman, to clarify, though, the hospital, the ambulance is something we really have to do.
Yes.
And I think trust fund is a valuable asset to have to be able to make sure we can mitigate problems with our EMS service.
Yes.
So I'm good with that.
Yep.
Okay.
I'll wait your governor's say.
Oh, you got to have ambulance.
Haven't voted yet?
Y'all ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously.
All right, Commissioners, so, item number six. Inform the board that I met with representatives from HCA Healthcare that included the CEOs from both Gulf Coast Regional Medical Center, Panama City, and Capital Regional Medical Center in Tallahassee. We discuss Weems current CEO status and other matters relating to Weems, including, sorry, we didn't Weems, including the new facility project and telemedicine. HCA expressed a desire to partner with Weems as the commissioners and the Weems Board of Directors move forward with improving healthcare across the county. With that in mind, would the board authorize me to contact all three major hospital healthcare systems surrounding the county? By that I mean HCA Healthcare, Sacred Heart, and Tallahassee Memorial to discuss future Weems partnerships? I would schedule workshops in October and November that would allow each organization an opportunity to make a presentation to the commissioners and the Weems Board of Directors. Representatives from all three organizations would probably request preliminary meetings that will consist of Chairman Lockley, Chairman Kramer from the Weems Board of Directors, and CEO David Walker prior to those public workshops. So, HCA reached out, and they reached out through Nicole, excuse me, and I think in the beginning it was just about telemedicine. Once they found out about the change in CEOs, became a bigger meeting than that. And, um, I kind of gave them an update, they kind of told me what they like, but they would like to basically, uh, go a little bit further and have a, a formal presentation to the board. So I figured, you know what, if HCA's do it, let's contact Sacred Heart, let's contract, contact TMH. And we'll have them, my plan is to have them individually, not altogether at one workshop, have separate workshops with each one could sit down with this board and the Weems, Weems Board of Directors and make a presentations and, a presentation, and we can ask questions and, you know, whatever needs to be done. I think, I think it's one of the best ways for us to move forward with not just the management of Weems, but healthcare overall in the county.
Ladies and gentlemen.
That's my idea.
I say move.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Burt.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Paris. I think it's a good idea, I mean, you know, they come in and they, so you bring out, so you come up with the best ideas? Because a lot of people be, a lot of time when rumors start, people start following the leader and they don't know too much about what they talking about. Because some of these things, these people talking, they, they want emergency room, freestanding, this, some of, some of it not going to work. I mean, any, anywhere you go in order for you to have an ambulance service, that ambulance got to have a home to go to. And they talking about closing out, they, they want you to close that Appalachia out and put a freestanding. It ain't going to work. You got to have, that means you going to hold your patient to wherever that ambulance docked at. Could be St. Joe, could be Tallahassee, could be Alabama. But that's where your ambulance going. If you shut Weems out, wherever that ambulance come from, that's where you going to have to take your patient. You better know what you talking about when you talking about closing out an emergency room in a hospital. All right, y'all ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Uh, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we freeze going forward this GMP. Because if we're going to have public workshops that are going to involve a period of time, I just don't think we, we can spend something, I know because we've already started it, but I don't think we're going to spend two hundred plus thousand dollars and not knowing how these workshops are going to come out.
I second that motion.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Burt. Any more discussion?
Yes, sir. May I?
Go ahead.
I think this is just wonderful opportunity to bring the integrated discussion of healthcare to this commission. To have these different entities that are surrounding us that are interested in our healthcare to talk with us about what the alternatives can be. And, um, I agree that we need to look at this guaranteed maximum price issue. On a, as I've said before publicly, that we're looking at a twelve-year-old set of plans that I just don't think has the relevancy in today's model. I say timeout. We're not, we're not rejecting the public's desire for a new healthcare facility at all. We're just trying to be responsible about what that looks like. And I am hungry for public input about what the public's vision is for healthcare. So, I support, uh, tabling that guaranteed maximum price project for now until we get more data where we are.
I've been listening to this for the last ten years, this is a bunch, that's a bunch of junk y'all talking. A bunch of junk. The guaranteed maximum price was there before. It is going to be, you're putting it off. And when you, the same thing will happen when y'all be gone. A new commissioner, he gonna, they gonna want to put it off. You putting off the hospital. That's what you doing.
No, I don't think the spirit of that is, no.
You do like you want it, I mean, it's the same thing, you going to need it. You going to need a hospital regardless of, or something.
Something.
But, I tell you what, all this putting off, you need the information from the public. I keep on telling you, them same public people out there don't want that hospital with the same public people, you know, twelve years ago. They didn't want it then, they ain't going to want it now, and they going to want it from now. Same one. I'm looking in their face, they looking in mine. They didn't want it then. They don't want it now. So, but do what you got to do. I'm going to vote the way I'm voting.
Mr. Chairman, I, I do, um, share your concern. We need a healthcare facility to, to stabilize people, get them to tomorrow, and dispatch them to the proper specialized care settings. We're, we're not saying no, we're just saying to compliment the voting public that made this vote back twelve years ago, let's just drill down and look at it more in detail.
What twelve years ago, you wasn't here?
Say again.
Were you here twelve years ago?
No.
Okay. But Alan Pfeiffer was, he one of the biggest ones in here. He ain't going to use it, no way, he can live in Alligator Point, he'd be a fool to use it. He going to Tallahassee or somewhere. I wouldn't come over here if I lived that close to Tallahassee. Rest them, they Sacred Heart people. I mean, it is what it is. But you do, do what you got to do.
If, if, if I may, um, Attorney Schuler, I'm going to need your help here. So, am I telling the, um, architect to whatever he's billed us, whatever he's done thus far, send us a bill and, and, and that's, that's it, it stops there? I mean, what, I mean, do you, sir, are you aware of whatever agreement we had that you could speak to right now?
Just wait, see what the board does first.
No, I'm going to staff.
Wait, they didn't vote or wait?
Yeah, I'm sorry, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I've, I've liked to clarify my statement so that no one transfers to me anybody else's comments. If we're going to move forward with having workshops with three entities around us, it needs to be on level footing. With that in mind, yes, it's going to cost us something, but we can't go forward getting a GMP because we don't know what the proposals are going to be. That's my intent and my only intent. My intent is not to bash or to delay. My intent is for us as a board, as a commission, to try to do our dead level best for it to proceed. So it's a level playing field for all three that are going to potentially be presenting to us. And that's the only thing I'm trying to state with my motion.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
So, Mr. Jones, you're saying that each one of these entities that we're supposedly going to meet with, that the board voted to meet with and look at what, what they think is best for Franklin County and, and it.
I think it needs.
In their proposal.
I think it at least needs to be weighed into, yes, sir. We, we don't, I don't think it would behoove us as a county, say, look, this is what we're going to do. Do you want to fit here? They are bigger players than we are, is all I'm, is my intent, that's all I'm trying to say.
Any more discussion? Y'all ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I oppose. That passes unanimously.
Mike, get with me after the meeting, I'll give you some instructions on what needs to be done.
Thank you. That is all the items I have for Weems on my report, Commissioners.
All right. You two, Miss Jeffy? Back to Mr. John Solomon, TDC Admin.
Morning Commissioners, John Solomon, TDC Director. First, we'll start out with our collections report for the month of May 2019. The collections were one hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents. This is a twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollar and fifty-one cent increase over May of 2018, which was a hundred and forty thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars and fourteen cents. This is an eighteen point five-five percent increase. It's the highest collections ever in the month of May by over twenty-two thousand dollars. Website activity, we had thirty-one thousand web hits in the month of July compared to thirty-five in July of 2018. It's eleven point six percent decrease. The visitor center numbers, the visitor centers welcomed four thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight visitors in the month of July. The entire 2018, January through December, was thirty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight. The reason I mention that is the total from January to July is already at twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three visitors that have visited our centers. So, traffic is definitely up, um, as we can tell in the, in the county. The TDC board voted unanimously to write a letter of support for the Franklin County's FDOT beautification grant for State Road 300. Also, Commissioner Jones and I will be attending the Florida Governors Conference on Tourism hosted by Visit Florida in Boca Raton on September 4th through the 6th. And also the Visit Florida Community Meeting. Franklin County has been selected of one of the twelve tourism markets to hold a Visit Florida Community Tourism Meeting. The meeting will be held at the Fort Coombs Armory on September 12th from 3:00 to 4:00 PM. I would like to invite all the Commissioners to attend and, of course, everybody else in the community. This meeting is open to anyone who would like to attend. We were very lucky in being selected as one of the twelve places in the state of Florida to hold one of these meetings. And the last item I have. And the last item I have on my agenda is the action item. And the TDC board has completed the process of reviewing the event and museum grant applications that were submitted. Included is a spreadsheet of all the requested grants. This spreadsheet includes small grants, major grants, and museum grants. All applicants that applied were eligible for the grants and met all the criteria set forth by the TDC board. On August 14th, the Grants Committee, me, the committee recommended to fund all requests listed. At the regular TDC board meeting on August 14th at 2:00 PM, the board voted unanimously to approve the Grant Committee's recommendations and forward on to the county commission for their approval. The TDC board is requesting the approval of thirty-five small event grants, seven major event grants, and six museum grants. The total budget for the program for the TDC in 2019, 20 budget year is two hundred and thirteen thousand. The total of grants requested is a hundred and ninety-three thousand and fifty dollars, with a remaining balance of nineteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars still available in the grants budget.
So moved.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Perry, second by Commissioner Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? They pass unanimously.
And the next scheduled board meeting is September 11th at 2:00 PM at the East Point Visitor Center.
Mr. Chairman, can I say something before John steps down? Serving at the pleasure of this board, on that TDC board as the chairman, working with John, I, I've never really done that before. John's never been the TDC administrator before. This whole process went very smoothly. I just want this board to know that. We had, this Grants Committee meeting took, what, about twenty minutes?
Twenty minutes, yes, sir.
And then the board meeting afterward was about forty minutes long. You know, that was just a sign of how smooth it was, everybody knew the questions being asked of them, there was nothing offhanded or slighted. Everybody that applied is going to receive money to help advertise for events in our county in this coming year, and I just want to give a shout out to our director and his staff for their hard work. Thank you.
Anybody got anything else for Mr. Solomon? Keep up the good work.
Thank you, commissioners.
Next on the agenda be Mr., you're going to do it, Mr. Mark?
I'm going to do a framing.
All right. Planning and zoning report.
Okay. First item is the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval for consideration of a request to construct a single-family private floating pier located at 800 Icrehamic Road, Carebell, Franklin County, Florida. The proposed floating pier will be sixteen feet by thirty feet and parallel to the shoreline. This request has a state permit and will be contingent upon receiving the federal permits. Request submitted by Timothy and Melody Small, applicant.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Matt, second by Commissioner Perry. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? They pass unanimously.
Okay, the second item is they recommended unanimous approval of a consideration of a request to construct a single-family private dock located at 2912 US Highway 98 East, Lanark. The proposed dock will be two hundred and thirty feet by four feet and have a sixteen-foot by twenty-five-foot covered boat lift, a ten-by-ten terminal platform, and a three-feet-by-thirty-eight feet walk-around. This request will be contingent upon receiving all state and federal permits. Request submitted by David Plummer, Outback Marine Construction Agent for John Snake, applicant.
Pleasure to vote.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Burke, second by Commissioner Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? They pass unanimously.
Third item is unanimous, they recommend a unanimous approval of a request for a single-family private dock located on property described as Lot 56, Alligator Point subdivision, 1662 Alligator Drive, Alligator Point, Florida. The dock will be two hundred feet by four feet with a six-by-twenty-six-foot terminal platform and a twelve-by-twenty-foot uncovered boat lift. This request will be contingent upon receiving all state and federal permits. Request submitted by Garlic Environmental Associates, Agent for Kevin Taylor, applicant.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Burke, second by Commissioner Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Pass.
And by four-to-one vote, they recommended approval for a public hearing for a consideration to, to rezone a six-point-five-one acre parcel of land lying in Section 32, Township 6 South, Range 1 West, at 714 Alligator Drive, Alligator Point, Florida, from the current C2 commercial business to C3 commercial recreational. This request submitted by Garlic Environmental Associates, Agent for Debbie and Thad Brett, applicant.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Burke, second by Commissioner Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? They pass unanimously.
And the item five is related to that, they recommended by four-to-one vote that consideration of a commercial site plan review for a ten-slip RV park and convenience store without fuel on this six-point-five-one acre parcel of land lying in Section 32, Township 6 South, Range 1 West, at 714 Alligator Drive. This would be contingent upon rezoning approval from the C2 to C3 commercial recreation. This request submitted by Garlic Environmental Associates, Agent for Debbie and Thad Brett, applicant.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Burke, second by Commissioner Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? They pass unanimously.
Uh, this sixth item was, they recommended unanimously approval of a request for a commercial site plan review to place a ten-by-twenty-foot office shed, six ten-by-twenty-foot containers for construction material storage, and two model homes and property located at 153 US Highway 98, East Point, Florida. The request submitted by Stephen Deputy, Agent for Little Custom Homes of North Florida LLC, the applicant. The property is zone C4, and we saw the zoning requirements.
So moved.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? They pass unanimously.
Okay. And the final item on the P and Z report is they unanimously recommended approval of amending the overlay district to exempt the following lots from the St. George overlay district, which is ordinance number 2018-02. There are lots 6, 7, and 12, Block 10 West, Unit 1, lots 1 through 16, 34, 42 through 46, Block 10 West, Unit 1, lots 1 through 4, 7 through 9, and 12, Lot 2 East, Unit 1, lots 23 through 30, Lot 4 East, Unit 1, lots 1 through 3, Lot 9 East, Unit 1, and Lot 1 and 3 through 46, Lot 10 East, Unit 1, St. George Island Gulf Beaches. This request was submitted by the county attorney, Mr. Schuler.
Pleasure to vote.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. All of these, Attorney Schuler, all of these are the ones that were, already had residences on the island before the overlay, correct?
Yes, sir. I, I spoke with Mr. Carrington about this matter in terms of identifying which lots had existing houses, C4 residentially zoned houses with pure residential uses, and this is, basically his findings matched almost exactly the findings that the property owner had submitted to the board, with the exception of, I think, the area to the left at the bottom you see, which I think is the Villas of St. George. They, they were not C4 residentially zoned houses, so therefore, they would be excluded from this consideration. My recommendation at this point is for the board to take under advisement the recommendation from planning and zoning, I just simply wanted them to review this and return their comment, so I'm not asking the board to take any action to schedule hearings or move forward at this time.
So, we're just going forward to do a hearing, is that what we'd be doing, or?
No, sir, I would say let's take the P and Z recommendation and hold it in abeyance at this point, let's, let's maul it over a little bit, but we are demonstrating that we're moving forward and considering the requests that the county has received and giving it serious consideration. But I do want to think this over a little bit further before I come back to the board with a recommendation.
That's what I wanted to clarify.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a, make a motion to table item number seven.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Perry, second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? They pass unanimously.
That's all I have, y'all have any more questions for me?
Thank you, Mark.
Anybody got anything else for Mr. Carrington? Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Next on the agenda will be, I think that is, Mr. Odensee will be a request for qualification, Alligator Drive Hurricane Damage Repair.
Well, let's get to the, um... No, 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 there are no prices on this, there are two different things we have to open up, excuse me, commissioners, let me get, um... The first one is going to be basically delayed until your September 3rd meeting.
Okay.
Firstly, I'm quickly here trying to find the statement from Mr. Pierce as to why we are actually doing that, I apologize, commissioners.
But it's because the, the road is not able to be relocated, is what I understood. We're having to go back to the original plan, and the people who are putting the bids need time to do that appropriately, that's what I understood from the email.
And then we just send it in there, and I, again, I apologize for where I am.
Michael Woodner, Woodner. FEMA has come back and said they want us to stay within the figures of Hurricane Humane, Hermine, which brought that price down to three million, three-point-five million dollars when the, after the damage of Michael, it's went up to five million dollars, and now we don't have the money to.
Thank you, Mark.
Fully do what they want to do.
Yeah, pretty much what I'm going to do is read a statement from Mr. Pierce's report, I'm sorry, didn't have it handy, I was switching over for the P and Z report. Let me read Allen's, from Allen's, Allen advised the board at the August 6th meeting that it was possible the timeline for submitting bids would be extended to accommodate contractors interested in bidding on the reconstruction of Alligator Drive. At this time, A contractors have picked up plans from Dewberry Engineers in order to accommodate them and provide them with the best opportunity to create good bids. Clay has sent out a bid addendum to all contractors extending the deadline for turning the bids until Friday, August 30th at the clerk's office. The bids will be opened at the September 3rd commission meeting, so bids will not be opened today, August 20th, but on September 3rd. That addresses the first item on your report as to why we are postponing the bids opening for the Alligator Drive Hurricane Damage Reporters. So, let's go to the second one, if there are no questions, no further questions on that item. It's the resurfacing and improvements to a portion of CR38. These are requests for qualifications, there are no prices on this, so basically what, and let me just read my item here, why do I do that? Today, the board will open requests for qualification packets for the design of the widening and resurfacing of the western end from Highway 98 to 13-mile roads of CR38. This, this is part of a Florida Department of Transportation-funded SCOP project. The qualifications will be ranked by a three-person committee, which will be myself, someone from the finance office, and someone from the road department. And a recommendation will be brought back to the board for action at your September 3rd regular meeting. After the packets are opened and the information read aloud today, board action to send the packets to the committee for review, and a recommendation is what is needed. So, basically, I'm just going to read out the name and where they're from, and let's start here. This one is submitted, uh, this is Dewberry Engineers, uh, they have a Port St. Joe office, and, got this from the Port, their port's in Joe office. So, Dewberry Engineers, that's one. The second is Genesis Halff, and their office is in Cal, in Tallahassee, they're on Calory Road in Tallahassee, so second, Genesis, and that's spelled H-A-L-F-F. I'll take a shot, this is myself. Howard Neighbors will be from, your superintendent, and I'm going to be safe here, and I'll just say Lauren. George Lawrence, okay.
Lauren Leverta.
Lauren Leverta rather than Erin. All right, so the fourth group here is George and Associates Consulting Engineers Incorporated, and their address is also in Tallahassee, they're in Commonwealth Lane, in Tallahassee. And, I'm sorry, George and Associates Consulting Engineers Incorporated. Guatemala. Guatemala? Guatemala, O'Malley, whatever, Engineering Incorporated, they are in Panama City Beach, they're on Thomas Drive.
Who was it?
I'll spot it for you. We good? That's all four. So, again, a motion to send it to the committee for a review, and a recommendation which will be returned to this board at your September 3rd meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Perry, second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? They pass unanimously.
Thank you, commissioners.
See you.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can we take a five-minute break?
Yeah.
Thank you.